Are we ready, Randy? It's 1:00 P.M. Today is Monday, November 11th, 2019. This is a special meeting of the Market Township Board. And we're going to discuss township manager applications. You want to roll us in?
Yeah, Trustee LaRue.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Trustee Everson.
Here.
Trustee Marks.
Present.
Treasurer Johnson.
Yes.
Clerk Rattar is here and Supervisor Durant.
Yes.
Staff present is Manager Gerard and our legal counsel, Rogers Apple.
Thank you. So we have no public. No response to that unless somebody wants to comment that we have no public. I don't believe we have any declarations of conflicts of interest. So we can get right into the process of the application.
I'll motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Or?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. You have a package. You've had a couple days to review it. All of the applications have been copied. They will be shredded after we are finished with them. We'll just keep the originals. I didn't copy envelopes and stuff, but I do have them here. There are a couple interesting ones in case you want to see them. The process today, just for the record, is that we have 16 applications to review. They're numbered A through O or B, I believe, or P.
P.
P. We have three candidates who've requested confidentiality. So we will go into closed session after we look at the initial ones to address those. The matrix has been applied. There is some interpretation that happens when you're looking through the applications. Just because I gave them that rating doesn't mean that that can't change. If there's more information that comes up, maybe I interpreted something wrong. But this is a starting point. The total number of points is 86 if you absolutely had everything that you could possibly have as a skill or qualification. So we have a few high ones, a few low ones, and some that actually didn't qualify at all to even be considered. There are seven of those, I believe. And we basically can look at them, talk about them, address them, however the process is, and go through every one of them. Dave?
Assuming that everybody has read their information that's been handed out to them. And unless somebody has a question about a specific candidate, can't we just see if we have a consensus of who we would like to bring in for an interview? And if we have a consensus of that, can we just leave it at that? Is it necessary to discuss every one of them? Is it necessary to discuss any of them at this point?
That's a Roger question. We have to consider every applicant that comes in.
Well, and I'm just saying they've been considered. They've been.
Not as a board in a meeting. So Roger, right or wrong?
There are many ways you could do it, and it's board preference. But you probably should have a motion. One possibility is a motion that there are seven in the motion makers estimate that don't meet the even minimum criteria. And I move that we remove those from further consideration. I mean, that's one possible avenue that is a shortcut to going through and voting on them all individually, certainly.
Okay.
And then at that point, if you have a motion and a second, and people disagree, well, then there's your discussion.
Sure.
Of those. But that shortcuts the process considerably.
With the ones that are left after such a motion, do you have to discuss every one of them, or can you just go based on your background work that you did reading the resumes?
Again, that's kind of board preference, really.
So it doesn't really matter one way or the other?
Not a lot, as long as they have all been presented to the board and the board just takes action on what they want to do. My opinion that I had issued two weeks ago, or whenever that was, was essentially to make the point that there cannot be preliminary rejection by a group or a person outside the whole board. But at this point, the whole board is meeting, so however you wish to address that, you have a fair amount of flexibility.
Is presentation to the board satisfied by the fact that we all got the packet?
It can be. If the board feels that they know enough from that packet, then yes. Now, if individual board members have questions on individual applicants and want to discuss those further, that's all fair game as well.
John?
The dilemma that we're facing right now is a reason why it was proposed that we have a chart. And we indicate on each candidate or each applicant whether or not there is a consensus of opinion not to consider them further or to consider them further. It wouldn't take long to go through and record that and then have a record that the board acted on each one and gave their opinion. The record is worth, it has some value to the clerk and it... Or you can do it as a group, I guess, but how much time would it take to go through and make sure that we don't have one member of the board who wants further discussion than what has been given? That's all.
Randy?
Well, to start this off, I'm going to make a motion. We remove from consideration Candidate C, Candidate I, Candidate J, Candidate K, Candidate L, Candidate N, and Candidate O.
And I'll second that. You want to specify why?
Um, they don't meet the minimum qualifications. And I don't know, I don't think we have to specify that, but correct, Roger? But we can just remove them as?
Correct. You should state a reason, but that's a sufficient reason.
Okay, so I will remove those candidates due to not meeting the minimum requirements for the position. And that's a motion.
And we second?
Pete did.
Okay. We'd like a roll call.
Okay, Clerk Rattar is yes. Uh, Trustee LaRue?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Everson?
Yes.
Trustee Marks?
Yes.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
So Candidate C is gone. Candidate I is gone. Candidate J is gone. Candidate K is gone. Candidate L is gone. Candidate N is gone. And Candidate O is now gone.
Okay, sounds good. Does anyone have a preference on what happens next? Or I can consider... Dave?
I would like to see us just consider the candidates that are left from A through P and everybody weigh in on whether they would like to interview them or not.
Okay, is that the question, or do you want to go through and ask?
I would just go through, for example, Candidate A. Would we like to interview him, or would we like to not consider him? And do that all the way through.
Okay. Do you want a motion on each one, are you thinking? Or do you want to just get a consensus and do it all at once?
It'll be easier if you did it all at once. You can talk about the group and as a consensus, but then at the end, you would have to make a motion who you are going to move forward, correct, Roger?
You need some kind of action.
Correct. But we can talk about...
Absolutely.
So can we consider Candidate A? I have, would consider him not a candidate for further consideration.
Thoughts, questions?
I think there's some good part, but I think we don't take the next motion. I don't think it's worth our time and effort to move on from that.
Okay, so not interview. Right?
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
So that's, so Dave made the motion for that. And who seconded that one?
John.
John did. So we are not going to...
He has, that individual has been removed from consideration.
Is there a reason, or do we want to say a reason?
I don't think he is one of the leading candidates.
Is that good, Roger?
That's sufficient.
That's why you're here, so we don't step on any toes.
You do not need to specify in precision why you are narrowing your pool to who you are narrowing.
Okay.
Okay, so that motion carried, then Candidate A is no longer in consideration.
Okay. John?
So I'll make the motion that Candidate B be no further consideration for further...
Support.
Consider.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Candidate B is no longer in consideration.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that number 13, Connie Wade, Walt.
Nope.
We have to go down the line.
We were kind of going in order. Next one would be Candidate D.
I'll move that Candidate D be removed from consideration.
Support.
Comments, suggestions, ideas? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Candidate D, no interview. So Candidates E, F, and G have asked for confidentiality. Those are the ones we'll cover in the closed session. So we're skipping over those. Candidate H?
I have a question about that. If we're referring to them by letter, do we have to skip over them if we're not mentioning them by name? In the process that we're going through right now? To interview or not to interview, do we have to?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Do we even have to go into, bring them into closed session if we're not going to consider them?
If, no, if we're not going to mention them by name. If, for example, I was going to make a motion to interview Candidate E.
Oh, because you're following each? I see what you're saying.
Yeah. Do we need to go into closed session to do that?
Well, you can't make a motion in closed session, but you can talk about them in closed session.
If you don't want to hear them, you take them off the list, regardless of his confidentiality or not.
He does. He does. I see what you're saying. He wants to... I want to make a motion to consider interview of Candidate E. I'll support that.
Okay.
And then a question I'll have for Roger. I think you can do that, correct?
You can.
Instead of, because you can't make a motion in closed session to do that.
That's correct. You can discuss the credentials in closed section, session, but you cannot make any motion or take any type of action.
So essentially, what we would have done anyway is come out of closed session and make a motion to either interview or not interview those candidates.
True.
That's correct.
And I have another question about that.
So he's just doing ahead of time?
At what point can you mention their name in the open meeting? Is it after they've accepted the interview? Or after you've accepted them for an interview?
I think it's after they've accepted the interview.
After they have accepted the interview presumably, or else, which may coincide with your next public action, which is conducting the interview, what they appear for, the interview.
So then we have a motion, right?
So your motion is second is to...
Interview Candidate E.
Correct?
Correct.
To interview or to discuss it in closed session?
To interview.
He wants to interview.
You want to jump?
We can still discuss it in closed session.
So we're...
He's just doing the motion now.
All right, all right. To consider for interview. Go ahead, John. I can see you're getting...
There was no reason why we couldn't skip by the ones that we need to get back to. And you have about another six or eight you could go with the motions that were being made.
To get them out.
And wrap that up.
And I can do that too. I can withdraw my motion if that's the way you want to do it.
Okay, you want to roll on with that? Or Dan, be the second?
Yeah. Whatever makes it easier.
All right, let's just go to Candidate H.
Candidate H.
H you're talking about.
H.
If there's enough people who want to look at her, that person, why don't you just skip by and go to the next one?
No, we can still, yeah, we can still, because then we need to discuss it here during this session.
I move that we remove Candidate H from further discussion.
I'll support that.
Okay. Any comments, suggestions? We can discuss this because they have not requested confidentiality. The main reason, and John came in and gave me the idea with the spreadsheet. I already had it set up, but the idea was to just keep a sense of organization and order. And, you know, we can say this person's name out loud if we want to, because they have not requested it, it's not necessary. We can have a discussion about this person if we want. So there's a motion on the floor. If somebody wants to...
There's been a motion and a second on Candidate H.
Say their comments or questions, or, you know, maybe you guys thought of something I didn't, or in relation to the matrix.
I can go either way on this here one. Doesn't make any difference to me, one way or another, though.
And the motion is to remove if we can...
To see what the rest of them think about it. I can remove my motion. Do you want to move forward on a little further discussion?
Well, take the vote, and we'll know.
Okay. Roll call.
Okay. All right, so the question is to remove Candidate H from consideration. All in favor? Oh, you wanted them. Go ahead, Randy.
Okay, Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Everson?
Yes.
Uh, let's see. Trustee Wiegand?
No.
Trustee Marks?
No.
Trustee LaRue?
Hmm, interesting. No, I guess I'd say no.
Clerk Rattar is yes, and Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
That motion carries four to three.
Okay.
So that Candidate H is gone.
Okay. Candidate M?
M is a Mary.
I'll make a motion. Number M.
M.
That we remove from consideration?
I'd support.
Comments, suggestions, ideas? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And Candidate P is your last one. From the non-accent on confidential.
I make a motion, we consider Candidate B, or P, sorry.
I'll support.
Comments?
Consider, right?
Consider. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. That leaves us with the three candidates who've asked for confidentiality. Now, the rest of the candidates are not getting an interview. We all supported the idea of interviewing Candidate P. My, my comments, since it was my motion, is that his paperwork was impeccable. His attention to detail was impeccable. The bad part is he doesn't have direct township management experience. He's got lots of government experience. He doesn't weigh quite as highly as the rest in qualifications for manage, uh, of township experience. But until we actually interview the rest of these or consider the rest of them, I'd like to have him stay as a person of consideration.
And that was number, a letter what?
P. Because sometimes the points are not everything there is. And I'd be interested to see how he interviews and how he explains his background. So that's my rationale.
Okay, I'll move that we move in the closed session pursuant to MCL 15 dot 68 subsection F to review and consider the contents of an application for employment or appointment to a public office. If the candidate requests that, this application remains confidential. However, except for otherwise provided in the subdivision, all interviews by a public body for employment or appointment to a public office shall be held in open meeting pursuant to this act.
I think you're bored, Lynn.
What's that?
I think you're bored.
No, we got to do a roll call for that. All right, so I made the motion. Dave is supported. We need a roll call vote. So Clerk Rattar is yes. Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee LaRue?
Yes.
Trustee Everson?
Yeah.
Trustee Marks?
Yes.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Closed session at 1:25 P.M.
Roger, does it make a difference or?
A couple of them, couple of them, couple of them of the application if the request
of confidentiality is continued or remains. If it's something beyond that, that there are questions or concerns, at this point, all you're really doing is looking to get that, that additional information. And we don't know what that's going to be when it comes in. But depending what the question is, it may or it may not qualify as an additional closed session discussion.
So if a board member has a question about something specific, they can get ahold of me. I can ask you, and we can disseminate the answer to everybody? You can?
Yes, but in that process, we have to be abundantly cautious that there isn't any deliberation.
Right, no, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, any additional information that is disseminated.
You can deliver the information to everybody.
And that's all. There's some times that be anxious to do that. And we have to have those discussions, you have to have those discussions on, at a public meeting. But if the question comes up, you know, the process you are applying to candidates.
Yeah, okay. Dan?
Roger, what?
Roger, what?
Oh, go ahead, Dan.
I just wonder if it's possible. I was on, I was under the understanding we were voting on P, not E when I said yes. Is it possible to change my vote to a no?
Support on way.
I'm just, I was on the wrong person.
Support.
Roger?
I don't know what protocol is.
You can do a motion to reconsider when you are at the same meeting, which you are. That has to be a two-thirds majority vote, and it has to be by someone who was not on the losing side of that consensus. You can't just bring it back up because you're disgruntled with how the vote turned out. Now, was that as?
No, I'm not, I...
Yeah.
I thought we were on a different person. That was my... Me and he sound awful alike, and it's just my only...
So let me elaborate on that. Somebody could make a motion to reconsider, and that would, motion would have to be by a two-thirds majority vote, which on a seven-member board is five people. That doesn't reconsider whether you give, whether you follow up...
It's just whether the vote takes flight.
Exactly. Whether you even, whether you even open it up for more discussion or not.
Okay, I'll make that motion, that we reconsider.
He was on the losing side.
You're on the losing side, John. The only people that can make that motion is...
Dave, Ernie, Pete.
Ernie, Dan.
You said that vote was seven to nothing. No, we're, see, we're talking with P, not P. And I thought we were on P.
No, I have a four to three vote it passed, so...
Right. That's right.
Yeah.
So Ernie, Dan, Dave, or Pete can make that motion to reconsider that.
Sorry, guys. I didn't think it was...
Well, can you...
I'll make the motion.
Well, he can make the motion because he...
Yeah, he was on the winning side. He was on the winning side.
Yeah, you can make the motion. And one of the agreeing...
Who can second?
Can second it?
I believe anyone can second it.
Okay, just the motion makers got to be on it.
Yes.
Yeah, right. Okay, so the motion is to reconsider the vote on Candidate E, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and we have a second.
No, that's not the motion. Motion is strictly, should we reconsider this?
Just to reopen it?
Yeah.
What did I, isn't that what I said?
No, reconsider the, it'd be to reconsider the vote.
Should we reconsider the vote?
And what was the motion?
I thought that's what they said.
It's not to reconsider at this, it's not to vote on...
Right.
Whether P or E is going to have further follow-up or not.
Okay, maybe I misspoke, sorry. That's what I meant.
And now, anybody, regardless of how they voted, votes. Correct?
Got to be between three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have to have a five-member majority to even, at this point, to even move over.
Reconsider. Because all we're doing is reconsidering. And then we have to take another vote.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Education, you know?
Yeah, I guess.
All right. So the motion is to reconsider Candidates E.
No, reconsider.
No, no, reconsider the vote.
Yeah, well, I was going to finish that.
Reconsider the vote would be for my thing on motion nine, which is the Candidate E.
Okay. All in favor? We need a roll call?
You need a roll call.
Okay.
So Trustee Everson?
Yes.
Trustee Marks?
No.
What do you mean, no? You seconded it.
This is just to reconsider.
No, we're reconsidering it.
We're just to bring it back on to the table.
To reconsider it.
To reconsider the vote.
We're not voting on the process yet.
On the original motion, no. Just to get to the point where you can vote on it again.
Yep. Yes. Trustee LaRue?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
No.
Okay. See, Treasurer Johnson?
No.
Clerk Rattar is no. And Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
It's dead.
It's dead. Motion does not carry, so...
Jesus Christ.
Wow.
Okay. Stands as it was.
All right.
We learned something every minute.
Yeah, that's for sure. No problem.
All right, so E, F, G, and P are the four candidates we are going to do follow-ups with. Background searches, references, and all of that. Now, I'm guessing there is, well, I know there's a process that Randy follows with background checks, and he probably has questions and forms and stuff. I can access that from you, or whatever information you have that... Because I want to follow the same process.
Yeah, it's on your schedule.
I would do...
So anything I have, you have.
I would do differently for my jobs. So I want to make sure I do the township stuff the way we normally do. Okay? What else? Nothing else?
Public comment?
No public.
Any board member comment?
Comment, gentlemen? Dave?
Wow. I'll second that. I got a headache. I got a headache.
Hey, we gotta do it right, we gotta do it right.
So by the next board day, we should have some idea which direction we're gonna go.
Next week? That'd be nice to think of.
Okay.
Have to have it all by Thursday.
So review of the motions, I'll give you a summary of what we just did. Okay, the first motion was to approve the agenda as presented. Second motion was to, um, remove candidates C, I, J, K, L, M, and O. And that was approved. Okay, the third motion was to remove candidate A, that was approved. Fourth motion was to remove candidate B, and that was approved. Fifth motion was approved, or to remove candidate D, that was approved. Sixth motion was to remove candidate H, and that was approved four to three. Seventh motion was to approve, or to remove candidate M, and that was approved seven zero. Eighth motion was to approve for further consideration candidate P, and that was approved seven zero. The ninth motion was to go in the closed session, and that was approved. The tenth motion was to approve candidate E for further consideration, and that was approved four to three. Motion eleven was to approve candidate F for further consideration, and that was approved seven zero. Motion twelve was to consider candidate G for further consideration, and that was approved seven zero. Motion thirteen was to reconsider the vote on motion ten, and that was not approved four to three. And that's where we're at now.
You learn something every day.
So I'll move to adjourn.
Well done, Ren.
I'll move to adjourn.
I have a question before we adjourn. The applications that were not approved to move forward, do you want them back? Can you get rid of them?
I'm hoping so, yeah. Can we?
You're hoping so?
Get rid of everybody but the four? Or do we still have to keep?
You gotta keep the?
I have mine.
No, I mean.
Do you ever keep the originals?
Absolutely, but I'm talking about theirs.
Yeah.
Get rid of all of them.
You have to get rid of those.
Well, they probably want to keep their four.
Yes, but you can get rid of all of them as long as you have the original.
Yeah, but there's no point in copying them again.
The things they don't want, I'm gonna get rid of.
Yeah. Give them back to me after them.
Well, I guess that's, that's an internal question, as far as whether you see yourself reaching back into, uh, the ones that you have excluded from the consideration at some future point.
Well, Lynn has the original.
I still have the originals.
It might happen, but.
If I have to copy them again, I have to copy them again.
So I'll move to adjourn.
I support it.
You sure now, Dan?
Wait a minute, we got a roll call.
You want?
What time is it? 2:28. We are adjourned.